Called the Common Council Executive Committee of January 23rd to order and ask staff to call the roll.
President Curry.
Here.
Vice President Figaro Cole.
Here.
Alder Vedever.
Here.
Alder Madison.
Here.
Alder Govinder Rajan.
Here.
Alder Conklin.
President.
Alder Evers.
Here.
And Alder Bennett is excused. You have quorum.
Thank you, Karen. At this time, I would entertain an approval for our minutes of our last meeting on January 9th. Draft minutes are on your agenda as well as available on Legisstar.
Second.
Move to proven seconded. Unless I see or hear otherwise, I will assume unanimous consent. And that is so, so that passes. That will move us into public comments. We have a registrant but not wishing to speak, so we have no other registered speakers or comments. This time, I would also remind the body to make any required disclosures or recusals under our city's ethics code. Seeing and hearing none, I will assume there are none, and that will move us into the majority of our meeting tonight, which is our interview with candidates to fill the vacancy of the District 19 Alder. So I will start with a brief overview of the interview and selection process for those of us who are joining and our candidates who are here. So I do want to advise that earlier this afternoon, we received notification that Joshua Miller has withdrawn from consideration. That leaves the remaining candidates in order of alphabetical order by last name, John Ughier, Richard Pearson, Joseph Rowling, and Michael Rosenblum. Each of the candidates will be asked the same two questions, which are both timed. The questions have been provided in advance to members of CCEC, to all Alders of the body, as well as our candidates, and consist of an eight-minute response max per question. So the first question is three minutes, the second question is five minutes. After we have gone, we will have the candidates come up and name in order of interviews that I just mentioned by last name. Once all candidates have been interviewed, the body will be turned over to paper ballots indicating the top choice for moving forward to be recommended to the Common Council for approval for appointments. I believe that is it. Are there any questions at this time? No? All right. Well, with that being said, I would like to invite John Ughier up, our first candidate for interview. Hi, John. Nope, you're out. The green light or red light? It's red, you're off; green, you're on. I will also be asking both of the questions. I forgot about that process. All right. John, are you ready?
I am ready, Alder.
Perfect. John, what are some of the critical issues facing District 19 and/or the City of Madison? You have three minutes to respond.
Well, first of all, I'd say it's proper to be humble for an alder in the freshman term, or especially in abbreviated term, on what they can accomplish or what they can even contribute to. But having said that, I think I can hit the ground running. I have some advantages. I've spent months last year in my campaign for this seat, meeting thousands of people, knocking on 2,189 doors, and participating in debates, forums, interviews. That built on my 10 years on the Board of the Wexford Village Homes Association. And starting about six years ago, I became active in attending the various outreach efforts for various departments, especially engineering, parks, and planning and the processes. I've read countless agendas and reports and maps, and watched council meetings and so forth. I lost the election, but I stayed engaged because I'm passionate about the future of Madison, and I was recently appointed to the Sustainable Madison Committee. So looking at District 19, flood mitigation is still a major issue. We all remember what happened in 2018 and the damage in 19. We're watching the development of the Sauk Creek Greenway, and they bring District 9, but we're downstream. Ultimately, we have to deal with those undersized conduits under the Greenway, under the Beltline and under High Point. If we're ever going to solve that problem, there are other watersheds as well that we have to tend to. The West Area Plan, I've participated quite a bit in most of the meetings. It's in its final phases, lots of differing opinions on certain aspects of it, especially with housing density. And the Odana Area Plan is something that's being absorbed in the West Area Plan, but it's mature enough, I think we'll start seeing developers take advantage of some of the things that we've planned in there, and that will require robust engagement as we look at them. BRT is going to be important to District 19. And of course, we can't forget 6610 to 6706 Old Sauk Road, the first presentation recently of a potential multifamily development on some fairly undeveloped property. At least the last time I looked, number eight on the agenda tonight is probably going to be on the consent agenda, but it did remind me that I've had a lot of comments this last year from residents about things like sidewalks, trees, bike paths. Citywide.
You've got about 10 seconds left.
Budget is the big one, struggling through that. Housing affordability is in many aspects, North-South BRT, Amtrak, Manona Lakeshore Plan, greenhouse gas reduction efforts, and other plans. Thank you.
Thank you. John, please describe the ways you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion, and how you would model these practices in relation to engaging with individuals and communities with identities different than your own. You have five minutes to respond.
I appreciate that question. I think it may be the most important facing all of Madison and our collective answers to that. Questions can determine whether Madison really aspires to everything that it would like to achieve. First, I know me. I know that I was endowed with privilege the day I was born, and I know that growing up in a rural Wisconsin village with zero diversity means that I started out very ignorant, struggles faced by Wisconsin minorities, especially minorities of color. It has been a journey of a lifetime to chip away at that ignorance, but I've tried. And I know I've learned that there are a lot of perspectives out there different than mine. Second, this is not a new issue for me. Starting in my twenties, I rapidly got increasing responsibility for teams with diverse coworkers, and because my focus was always on developing the strongest possible team, recruiting people for it, promoting people, just developing them to be all that they could be, I inevitably ran into obstacles that I never faced, obstacles faced by people different than me. And sometimes that opposition was subtle, sometimes it was just disgusting. So I'm proud of the decisions I made in those instances, but the courage it took me to make those decisions and make those things happen were nothing compared to the courage of the people that I asked to break through barriers and deal with the consequences. I would say that District 19 is more diverse than most people would appreciate, looking at the complexion of the people that show up for sitting meetings. But I know that from my campaign, from my involvement in Wexford Village, I've also learned that there's some very nice people out there who nevertheless feel entirely feel it's entirely appropriate to preserve at any cost the character of the neighborhood that they currently live in, that change should happen in someone else's neighborhood. Common Council's going to be wrestling with a lot of issues, and nearly everyone has some amount of equity component. I would say again, number one is the budget. This country has a long history of balancing budgets by eliminating programs, shunning new projects that mean the most to our vulnerable neighbors. Housing is a crisis in this city. We all know that, and I'm hopeful that my knowledge in that whole area of affordable and sustainable housing can have an impact on identifying which things we need to do to preserve and enhance equity. And I could go on, in terms of policing and transportation, climate equity. I'm hoping that the tactics I've learned to deal with equity in my experience in business and in civic affairs would have some positive ramifications on the city council. The city council is a team, and one of the things I've learned is that a team cannot make progress on equity if it doesn't start with a majority of the members having a deep respect for each other, a profound respect that gets you past the inevitable disagreements. I also make it very explicit, I encourage my teammates to let me know. Hit me in the shoulder, slap me in the back of the head if I'm wandering off of a path of equity. I would always appreciate that. And then, as a team, we need to examine every decision. Whom does it benefit? Whom does it ignore? Who does it condemn to continued injustice, realizing that there are sins of omission and commission? And finally, I treasure the opportunities to add to my network of associates and friends, people who are different than me, and I try not to be a jerk about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. All right, moving along, I would like to invite Richard Pearson up. Hi, Richard. All right, I will ask the same questions and give you the same.
Can you hear me okay from this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Can you hear yourself echo there, right?
Yes. I think so. I think so.
All right. Are you ready?
Yes.
All right, Richard, what are some of the critical issues facing District 19 and/or the City of Madison? You have three minutes to respond.
Thank you. You know, I think District 19 is a large district geographically, so issues that affect Madison overall are going to affect District 19 quite a lot. The issues at the top of my list would be budget, transportation, and housing. Obviously, these are very much interrelated for the purposes of, this is a short discussion, so I'll focus on housing for this. I mean, we know that there's a very severe shortage of affordable housing in Madison, but I guess when we look to media or social media or public opinion, people seem to want easy answers and immediate results, but I think people in this room will all know that that's just not really how it works. There's a lot of challenges with these things to actually getting the results we want, and there's financial challenges, there are managerial challenges, there's a lot of legal nuances and complexities to making these things happen properly, and I hope that's where I can be most useful. That's my entire career was spent dealing with complicated challenges on financial matters and managerial matters and, you know, legal complexities and nuances. When I look at the areas across Madison, including close to my district, I mean, I can look over at Alder Conklin's district and see the Tree Lane project, where, you know, it's great that a project got built, and it was 45 units, and the units were affordable. Now people are being kicked out of this because a service provider, a management company, didn't do their job. So obviously, many things were done right, but when this falls apart, we don't actually get the success that we had intended from the very beginning. We look downtown, and I'm familiar with the efforts of Alder Govinder Rajan in terms of there are buildings going up downtown. It's important that we make those buildings consistent with the needs of the downtown population, including a large student population. Making that happen requires navigating a lot of nuanced and complex legal issues, which I'm aware of Alder Govinder Rajan's efforts to navigate those and to educate the media and the public on, a lot of times, these things are more nuanced and complex than they appear on the surface. It's a lot harder than just building a building. Likewise, in Alder Curry's district, we can see, you know, the projects on the further east side where it is larger challenges than that, where the only reason, the only way to properly deal with those is to get involved, you know, kind of in-person involvement and actually try to manage the financial and legal changes hand-on. So each of these, I think, ends up being far more challenging than the public opinion might initially suspect.
Okay, I was just about to give you a 10-second warning. All right. Richard, please describe the ways you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion, and how you would model these practices in relation to engaging with individuals and communities with identities different than your own. You have five minutes to respond.
Thank you. So obviously, in Wisconsin, I'm part of the majority, and I realize that, and so are all of my fellow applicants here. That said, I've spent a very significant portion of my life living in other countries where I was not part of the majority. I was part of a much smaller group of basically outsiders where, you know, I was in a place where I didn't necessarily speak the language, the local language fluently, it was a different culture, I was a different ethnicity, a different appearance, I had a different accent than people. So as a result of that, I've definitely experienced certain life experiences that I think are eye-opening in a way that's, experiencing them is different than just watching them or talking about them, and that's left an impression on me that I think I continue to live out. When I think about how to make changes and address matters of concern like that, my preference is to try to deal with things in a way that is very specific and very hands-on, as opposed to being kind of hypothetical or theoretical, where I've chosen to kind of plant my flag in Madison, is on matters relating to literacy, and I've been pursuing a number of local, there's a number of local causes I've been getting involved in here. Literacy, to me, is one of the big issues that divides people in terms of the opportunities they have and the experience they have in any part of a community. Some of the things I've gotten involved in, there's an organization downtown, which is the Children's Dyslexia Center, that's in the Masonic Building downtown, I'm involved in that. That would be largely fundraising capacity. There's another opportunity I'm pursuing, which is, it is, there's a financial literacy project which is advancing, which will teach financial literacy in the Dane County Jail. A friend of mine is head of the BMC here in Madison, and he's helping me arrange that. He's generally known for housing and employment-related causes, but this is a separate issue which advances literacy causes. My involvement there would be hands-on, that would be actually teaching out of a book to people, and so that would be a very personal involvement. A third one, which I've gotten more recently involved in, on the west side of Madison, there's a family literacy program over by Elver Park, and that would be teaching literacy, basically getting families to work together, so it'd be parents and children working together to improve literacy. My involvement with that would be likely less hands-on and more of a volunteer on the administrative side. Thinking about matters of equity and inclusion, my personal experience, living in countries where I didn't necessarily, I've been told I'm a pretty smart guy, and my ability to communicate in the language was fine in terms of a verbal sense, but my inability to deal with things like, you know, financial documents, whether it was a credit application, or a lease application, or medical documents, or things like that, the inability to communicate in a literate way in writing is a significant factor which prevents people from having basically daily quality of life in ways where we can see that as a pretty big gap in equality between people or their ability to be included in any daily situation. So, you know, like I said, my approach to dealing with these things, I do like to do things hands-on, I like to do things in a way that is local, where I can see the results I'm getting and feel that I'm actually getting something done.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to invite Joseph Rowling. Did I pronounce your last name right?
Oh, I'm sorry?
Is your last name pronounced Rowling?
Rowling, yep. Like Rolling Stone.
All right. Thanks for joining us. You ready?
Thank you.
All right. Joseph, what are some of the critical issues facing District 19 and/or the City of Madison? You have three minutes.
So I've kind of written a white paper here. I broke it down into social issues, education, climate change and environment, quality of life, development, like building development, and population growth. These are not in order of importance, they're just issues that have always been on my mind and will continue to be on my mind. So in terms of social issues, that would include everything from policies on homelessness, alcohol and drug abuse, drug trafficking, gun crime in Madison, domestic abuse, income, economic inequality, poverty, social inequality, equal access to the same opportunities for everyone in Madison, Child Protection Services, crime and policing, those would all be at the top of my list of concern. Education, very important to me. I, Madison, just by the way that it emerged and developed over the decades, instituted some progressive educational policies that make it possible for someone like me, who is, you know, lower or middle income, to have a, to go to good schools. And I've lived in Chicago, where the public schools are, there's an enormous disparity, even though they're public schools, depending on what neighborhood you're in in Madison, I'm impressed at the quality of schools, no matter what community they're in. And some, for some people, that may be their only opportunity to break out of poverty is that they went to a high-quality school. So maintaining that, and then just things within the school, safety of the, of the students, bullying, drug and alcohol abuse, and then teaching diversity, equity, and inclusion in the curriculum and cultural sensitivity. I went to Edgewood High School for a year, and we didn't have a Catholic curriculum. We had a comparative religion curriculum, where we learned about everybody's religion, and I found that to be valuable, just in terms of going on to college and then in the workplace, and I'm really glad that they had that class. And I think it's important that they, that people may not be able to get that, once they leave the Madison school systems, as we've seen, they may not get it in college. So.
10 seconds.
Oh, 10 seconds, okay. And then just preserving the quality of life in Madison, and, you know, the arts, culture, and controlling population growth.
Thank you. Joseph, please describe the ways you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion, and how you would model these practices in relation to engaging with individuals and communities with identities different than your own. You have five minutes.
So my last job was at the University of Wisconsin, and So, my last job was at the University of Wisconsin and I was on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. And that also came with continuous and periodic training sessions. And basically, what it distilled down to, really, what the consensus was in those training sessions was the golden rule, to treat other people the way that you would want to be treated and to always refer back to that when you're engaging with people and communities. And then to always be aware of your unconscious bias, microaggressions, that the assumptions and beliefs and attitudes accumulate in our subconscious. And we have to check ourselves every now and then before we speak and engage with people and not bring to those interactions some of these unconscious biases. And again, it gets back down to respect. You have to neutralize presumptions that you have when you encounter a person, engage with a person, preconceptions, stereotypes that you may have in your collective memory that you were exposed to just through living life and the media and so forth. But really to treat every person as a unique individual deserving your respect and dignity. Then it's important too to take initiative and learn proper terminologies, people's pronouns, preferred phrases. I, I drove taxi for, and, and special needs elderly people in Madison and we, there's a required course and it's just interesting, you don't know how people want to be addressed until they tell you or you ask them and you have to be proactive about that. And to have appropriate conversations, I can't tell you how many jobs I worked in where people were trying to suss out if I was gay or straight just by asking me like, "Oh, what are you doing this weekend? Do you have a girlfriend? Do you have a, you know?" And, you know, those are inappropriate questions, they're uncomfortable questions and people should be more aware of, you know, what they're saying. And then in the larger context, are systems equitable? And are they accessible by everyone? And there can be certain walls that prevent accessibility, you know, disabilities, for instance, but then there can also be financial walls that prevent people from availing themselves. And so it'd be important for me as a councilperson to make sure that our programs are accessible by everyone and everyone can enjoy what Madison has to offer and there aren't barriers to that. And another thing too is material changes to policies and culture. So you can institute a DEI program, but statistically, it's shown that 60% didn't affect the change in the organization that they hoped that it would because they weren't successfully implemented. So when you're talking about DEI, you have, you have to talk about action, not just talking about it. You have to implement it, you have to enact it, every individual has to enact it. So I, being a web developer at Dean Care and SSM Health, that was always at the top of my attention was, is the imagery that we're using inclusive. And I think if you go to the Dean Care site, you'll see that-
You have about 30 seconds.
I was pretty successful at that. But it is important when you're working, you know, on marketing materials or any kind of documentation or whatever, that you're incorporating and aware of diversity and how you're communicating to everybody. And then just in terms of Madison, you know, this can, diversity, equity, and inclusion, you know, it, it's, it's really involved in everything from-
Did you want to finish that?
Oh, I was, I was gonna say hiring and public art and how you name things and everything, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we'll bring up our last candidate, Michael Rosenblum. And am I getting the pronunciation of that last name?
Rosenblum.
Rosenblum.
Close enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Ready?
I am.
All right, Michael. What are some of the critical issues facing District 19 and/or the city of Madison? You have three minutes.
Okay, and I'll just quickly note, I've been Madison resident for 32 years and have lived in the same house in District 19 for the entire time. And so have a good understanding, having served in our Neighborhood Association and as president of our Neighborhood Association of some of the very local process, processes and, and, you know, what's going on with Lake Mendota Drive currently and have been actively engaged with that, but certainly would broaden it to the entire district. But also, you know, what happens in our district is citywide as well. And what I see is kind of most important is sustainable growth as we see population increase and continues. So just to ensure that Madison remains a welcoming, accessible place to all who are coming here. I think housing is important. The work that I've done on Madison City Commissions, on Landmarks Commission and then Urban Design Commission gave me a lens into planning, Madison City planning and some of the ins and outs there. And certainly see the need for safe, secure, affordable housing here. Along with all of that and looking at the population growth, infrastructure is important as we see the continued, you know, encouragement of development and growth of a multimodal transportation system to serve, you know, everybody here, workers, residents, visitors, making sure that that's accessible for all. As an avid biker, I would, and a very utilitarian biker, I should say, biked, you know, biked to work for many years. So making sure that we have bike paths that are accessible and walking pedestrian paths for folks that are accessible, rapid trans, bus rapid transit, you know, I know we're down the road there already, pun intended, but certainly more work to do as it gets up and running. And, you know, I just really do view the priorities of our district as the priorities of the city and would plan to be responsive to the basic requests and the questions from constituents and look forward to learning as I go forward.
Thank you.
And I'll try to be brief as I'm the last candidate here.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, Michael, please describe the ways you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion and how you would model these practices in relation to engaging with individuals and communities with identities different than your own. You have five minutes.
Thanks. And would agree, I think with John, that this may be one of the most important questions that we're seeing, not just locally, but of course nationally, as we see further and, you know, more pushback to DEI efforts nationwide and locally in some cases too. So I would just start with saying, for me personally, it's kind of part and parcel of who I am on a personal and professional level. It's what I've kind of crafted my personal life and career around. As I said, have lived here for 32 years, have raised two, two sons who are now adults, amazingly enough, 26 and 27, who both went through the Madison Public Schools, so certainly saw the successes that we have there and the challenges that we have there. Both my kids are adopted from South Korea, so saw some of the challenges they had as, as, you know, people of color in our school district and in Madison in general. And then professionally certainly have seen, you know, it's been, as I said, a big piece of who I am and what I do. My first job here, when I moved here 32 years ago from St. Louis, having just finished law school, took a job with Jewish Social Services and had the pleasure of doing, working under some wonderful people and doing some great work with senior adults. We had a meal site in what's the old Green Bush neighborhood and it was, you know, this is 1993, one of the most diverse meal sites I've ever seen with folks who had grown up in the neighborhood. And I expect most of us know Green Bush's history, so there were Jewish, you know, seniors and African-American seniors and Italian seniors. And it was just amazing fun to see them bring in photos from their class pictures when they were young kids and identifying each other. So knowing that there was this somewhat tainted history, but a history of, in Madison, of diversity, equity, and inclusion and being wiped away for economic development and then hopefully coming back here in, in some fashion. So that really, you know, that first job I had here really helped inform my sense of Madison and who we are and who we strive to be. And I also had the pleasure in that role of working with the resettlement of refugees from a variety of countries and had a really wonderful experience, learning again from colleagues and working, you know, mostly with refugees from former Soviet Union, but we also worked with refugees from South American countries, from African countries. And that program has really been built out in subsequent years as well and I've stayed in touch and know those folks well. My next, next job professionally was working at the Jewish Federation of Madison and I was Director of Community Outreach. The role was created to be an outreach role to other, interreligious outreach and to work with other communities of identities that were not the same as ours. So working with the gay and lesbian community and the African-American community and the Hispanic community, I sat on the Latino Workers Project and helped develop some of that. Spent some time on what's now called Just Dine, but was at the point, the Madison Area Urban Ministries Board and served as Vice President there and working with a lot of folks returning to the community after being imprisoned and working with supporting families and children who have a family member in prison. So certainly enjoyed the work I did there and continue to have connections. And then would like to focus mostly on the work that I've done for the last 20 years with regard to the patient family experience. So I spent 16-plus years at UW Health in the Office of Patient and Family Experience, overseeing our volunteer services program and our patient family, we, patient family advisor programs, which we stood up during my tenure there and ended up spinning off happily to give some other folks work to do, but for both of those, worked hard to ensure that our volunteers and especially our patients and family advisors at UW Health reflected the folks that we were serving, the people who we, we meet with, people who we see coming to UW Health, not just from the local area, but, you know, internationally in, in many cases, and making sure that we met them where they're at and were able to, you know, provide services that were comforting and, you know, of course medically acute in many cases and medically proper, but also making sure that folks had an understanding that they were appreciated for who they are and making sure that, you know, any things they might be bringing to us were understood and, and that their voices were heard. In my most recent role-
About 30 seconds.
I work as the, oh yeah, did you have something? I'm sorry.
About 30 seconds.
You have 30 seconds though.
My most recent role is at Ronald McDonald House Charities where I'm Senior Director of Family Experience and similarly do very hard work to meet the families who are coming to us from a variety of areas and a variety of backgrounds and making sure they're comfortable. Some quick examples, we just had a family, Swahili-speaking family, so quickly translated all of our documents into Swahili for them. We use the interpreter iPads as well and lots of other initiatives that I could talk about at some other time.
Thank you. All right. Let me just first thank John, Richard, Joseph, and Michael for joining us today. I will give maybe, just, we'll move into discussion. Karen will be issuing our paper ballots, but normally, you know, in CCEC and in CC during discussion, we have a round of questions. Obviously, we have constrained time, so I would say if in part of any members of the body, and we do have other peers from the council here with us too, if there are discussion points to keep it to either discussion or comments about materials that were submitted with the application or information that we heard from the questions here today, but not asking additional questions at this time. And then, yes, we'll pass out the ballots now.
Unless you're a tiebreaker?
Yes.
Well, they're gonna do ballots.
Can we maybe provide some information about the ballots?
So each of you has a ballot. As I mentioned, it's a, it's not an, it's not a secret ballot for this type of ballot, so your names are on there. And you can thank our wonderful attorney. Just kidding, it's not his rules. I know. It has everyone's name on it. You, you choose one, you hand it back to me and we'll count them out. If someone gets a clear majority, which is four, then I can hand it back to the president to see if they want to move, she wants to move that person as a recommendation, then you'll get, you know, she gets a second, then you'll have discussion and take a formal vote to recommend that person. If by some chance we get a different configuration where we don't have a clear majority, we have a few more of these, so we can go through a few more times until we get a majority. If that doesn't work, we can, I have some thoughts, we can reconvene. If you could just mark, mark your ballot and come over. Do you want, do you want them to be able to discuss before they vote or?
Alder Conklin.
I do have a question, since we've never done this in person before. So do you go around and say who we voted for or how does it, you know, or you just-
It is our secret.
They're not, it's not secret, but we are not gonna be, we don't have to announce each of your votes. We'll have them on the record.
Right, okay.
Is that accurate?
Right, they're public records. I mean, it's not, the only time the council can vote in secret is for its officers or unless you're in closed session.
You know, we never did this before, so I'm just wondering how it works.
Yeah, so go ahead and make your mark and pass it back to me and then I'll, we'll count, I'll have him verify on counting the four votes, right? You can discuss if you want, yeah.
That's all I was gonna say, is it, I mean, it is like a motion, so if the body wants to have discussion beforehand, you can, but you don't have to.
Isaac, do you want to maybe grab them so they don't have to get up? Sorry, my back is, you don't have to get up, sorry about that.
Oh, no.
Don't make it have to get up. Thank you. You can verify my ballot counting abilities. Nope, looks like we're not having another one. Never run out of it. Verify that.
Between these two, I think.
That's right. Is that, is that, are you correct? Okay, because three is just a half, we need one more, right? Okay. All right, so we have, we have results. There were three votes for John Uguere and the next, so that's the top, that's, we're gonna do another ballot, so runoff, so that will be the one choice. And the second was two votes for Michael Rosenblum. So, and one vote then for Joseph Rowling. So Isaac will pass out another round of ballots, but the choices are John Uguere or Michael Rosenblum. It's a runoff to see who of those two, we can see if we can get, if there's a majority there or not.
Karen, can you say that again?
Yes, so you're going to choose either, I guess, or you can choose not to choose. You can either choose John Uguere, choose Michael Rosenblum, or choose not to choose anyone, if that makes sense, just leave it blank. It's a runoff, yeah. And then, once we have those results, you all can have conversation, discussion, and decide what you want to-
Can we ask questions?
That's up to the president.
So with-
Is that everybody? No.
Time constraints, that's kind of what I was alluding to with the discussion points. If we were to ask, I would want the ability for all candidates to have the opportunity to respond. So if maybe there are specific clarifications on answers that were provided tonight or in application materials, knowing that we are moving forward a recommendation for common counsel and another opportunity could come in chambers where the mayor could allow specific questions for timing purposes. And I guess for the record too, in communicating with former Alder Slack, it was very important to her to have as small of a gap as possible to make sure that District 19 residents were adequately represented. And so I understand we have the constraint of time tonight with CC starting in about-
And in the event of a tie, I would vote to break that.
It's still not four. Do we want to add?
It's our first time doing this, too.
To make a recommendation, so really, yeah, all right. Okay, so the results are... Oh, whoops, I screwed that up. There we go, okay. The results are, three votes for John Uguere, two votes for Michael Rosenbloom, and one abstention. So, I think we have some leeway here. You can, it's not really a tie, is it? So they can discuss, and I think at this point, a motion can be, why don't you maybe want to discuss, see how it plays out here?
Moving into discussion, which could also include moving a motion for a recommendation forward as well.
So I'll read the section of the ordinance about the CCEC role. Says that the CCEC shall review the applications and fill in opportunities for personal candidate interviews, shall recommend to the council a candidate selected for confirmation to fill the vacancy. If the committee is unable to agree on a candidate to recommend, it may recommend more than one candidate, or it may reopen the application process to seek additional applicants. So those are your options, sort of regardless of what, we don't have a majority vote yet of the committee, so regardless of what those votes were, you need to pass a motion with at least four votes to either recommend one candidate, more than one candidate, or neither candidate.
Any questions in response for Attorney Haas, or is it clear?
So just to clarify, right now, either one of us could just make a motion to...
Okay, all right.
But it would have to get four votes to go forward.
To clarify us a question, if we were to recommend and open up that process again, would that be at the next CCEC meeting, or for more applications, I guess? Sorry, I'll speak up into the microphone. If we, my question was, if we opened up the application process again hypothetically, would that be at the next CCEC meeting that we would have more interviews, or would that be set at a different date?
Well, I think it depends on the timing. The ordinance just says it may reopen the application process to seek additional applicants, so I assume you'd want to do that as quickly as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Evers.
Would it be possible for us to go in closed session so we can discuss this among ourselves, without the candidates or anyone else present?
No. It doesn't fit any of the exclusions to the, exemptions to the open meetings law. It's not because we're not hiring an employee, it's an appointment to the council.
I think Alder Harrington McKinney had a question.
So the question was, because we couldn't hear in the back.
You may have to come up to the mic. Yeah, IT is, media team is recording.
I raised my hand because I could not hear from the back, but the second, when there was a discussion about the closed session, was that closed session for the body or for all Alders who are represented here?
So, if there was a closed, if there was a closed session, all council members could attend, but my response was you cannot have a closed session to fill a vacancy.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
Do we...
Does this work here?
No.
You have to kind of, you have to raise your hand.
I just want us to do this tonight.
Alder Madison?
I do, I do. I guess I'd like to make a motion to appoint John, is it Gisgier?
Uguere, I believe.
Uguere, Uguere. Is there, oh, I'm not asking that.
All right, Alder Madison moves to recommend John Uguere. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Figaro Cole.
Can I make a friendly amendment to this motion?
I think that would be in order, Alder.
Given the interest at recent CCEC meetings in doing some kind of ranked voting and recommendation to the broader council, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend John G. and Michael Rosenbloom for full consideration to the common council.
Okay, so the motion now before is offered by Alder Evers is to recommend both John Uguere and Michael Rosenbloom for consideration to the council. I believe Attorney Haas has some guidance.
I guess the question is whether that can be an amendment. I think probably there's two ways to go. We have the first motion on the floor, the amendment could be to add the second candidate, vote on that, that passes or fails, and then you vote on the main motion. If you, if, I think if the body wants to vote simply in the second motion, that would require the entire body agreeing to withdraw the first motion, because in a sense, it's contradictory to the first motion. So I think if the maker of the first motion is willing to withdraw, and the second is as well, you could go right to the second motion. Otherwise, I think you should vote on simply adding the second name, and then treating that as an amendment to the first motion.
So can I change my motion to add the second name?
That, right, I think that's more proper.
Right.
So that'd be an amendment, you would need a second.
The amendment would be to add Michael Rosenbloom as the second name to recommend to common council.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, but I also want to ask a question.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I just want to be sure we're going to go into discussion before we...
First, we need a second.
For a second? Alder Madison?
No discussion.
Or, I'm sorry, Alder Ritter said the question.
Yeah, so I just, so then, should this amendment pass, then we go to council, and both names are brought before council?
If the amendment passes, it is adding the second name, which is, I'm sorry, which is the second name?
Michael Rosenbloom.
Okay. If the amendment passes, then the main motion would be both of them. This is just a question about whether to include...
I have two names, right?
Right, whether to include Michael in the main motion.
I guess I'm asking what happens after that, then.
So if it passes, there's another vote on forwarding both names. If it doesn't pass, then there's just a vote on the first name?
Okay.
At council?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out.
We have to vote at council.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. So then, at council, it would be majority vote on which one?
Right. All right, well, it would, the CC, there would have to be a separate motion at council to choose one.
Right.
Because CCEC can recommend more than one, obviously, the council has to choose one.
Alder Gov. Rajan?
Are we able to ask specific candidates questions regarding their application material or the stuff they spoke about? If a motion was made?
In CCEC?
Yes.
If a motion was made to ask a que...
Of the candidates, I guess, or the applicants.
Is that an appropriate motion?
I think it's, it's up to the body, I mean, it's, it can be, you know, you're really in discussion period now, if the body wants to allow questions of the speakers, I think you can do that. If you want to be mindful of the time, if you want to say, well, we'll set aside a certain number of minutes to do that, to make sure we don't...
I guess, in response, Alder Gov. Rajan, do you have a question for both candidates? One?
One of them. I'll hold off, it's fine, thank you.
Okay. I have a question, too. So, because at CCEC, we talked about how that may come across with two people sort of going, you know, just what that process might look like in person at common council. So should there end up being two folks, because again, we talked about this at CCEC, how it appeared that that was not our intention, was to create that kind of scenario for anyone who applied for this position, just because of what we all know that it's going to look like for them. So could you explain to me what that process may look like? Is this sort of like opening up their applications again? Can the body just access, you know, many questions that they want, you know, like, I'm just interested on like, what are the logistics of that, like?
You're talking about here at council?
At council.
So the council, also, its options are wide open, they can, the council can confirm a recommended candidate, or confirm another candidate from the entire pool. So they will have, you know, through legislature, the application materials for all the candidates, and they could go off the board if the, if the council chooses to appoint somebody.
Then here's my next question. Can I, I don't know, and I'm tired right now, and this is not hot anymore, but amending, I'm just asking, could I amend or make a motion to amend Alder Evers' motion to just include the entire four then, so that it is not just the two? And I'm just really thinking about what is, what this is going to look like for two people. Because I mean, because what essentially is going to happen is you'll have two, and I get it, we, there were three to two, so we decided we want these two potentially to go up at common council, but it doesn't, there might be more gleaned from the other two candidates, and now they won't necessarily have that opportunity. I get it, but I'm just curious.
You can, you can recommend the entire pool, there's pros and cons to that, the council might think it's up to CCEC to narrow it down for them.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
So it's an option, I guess.
Attorney Haas, please interrupt me if I'm incorrect in anything I say, but speaking as the council president, and kind of picking up on some of the apprehension on moving forward with one candidate, or two, or four, just reminding us that we have a full council agenda ahead of us, which includes a referred item regarding increase to alder pay. We, in terms of council leadership, provided information on the process, as well as the questions, and we can advance to all Alders, to members of the body, as well as the candidates. I would strongly urge us to deal with the original motion at hand, and if that fails, then possibly, as Attorney Haas alluded to in the ordinance, there's the ability to reopen the process, because to me, it's not necessarily about one or four here, but possibly getting the totality of information to make an informed decision as a legislative body on who we think would be best to represent the district. So, if I can say that, I don't know if legally I can say, let's not add a third motion, amendment to the motion, but would ask Alders, if based on what I just said, if you have offered a motion and that you would like to withdraw, to do so, and then I would like to handle the first motion, which is to appoint John Uguere.
Right, so, right, so currently, we have the motion and the amendment that are on the floor, so unless...
Yes. So we have to deal with the motion on the floor, which is the amended motion to add a second name. Okay, and then we will go to roll call, because I'm assuming there is not unanimous consent there. Alder Gov. Rajan?
I really apologize, but separate motion, I motion to reopen applications.
Right, so I...
That can be like after these motions, right?
Right, I think that would probably be out of order, considering the motions that are on the floor.
So the current motion on the floor is to add both names of John Uguere and Michael Rosenbloom as recommended to the council, to vote on one person based on unanimous, or not unanimous, majority vote.
This amendment is only to add Mr. Rosenbloom to...
Well, semantics, yes, two names. Okay, roll call vote on the original motion of John Uguere, and adding Michael Rosenbloom as recommended actions from...
It's only a motion to include Mr. Rosenbloom.
Okay, if you could make it, then, so it's legally accurate for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Alder Rahaly has a question.
Where will Alder Gov. Amendment goes?
That would only be considered if the amendment and the motion do not pass.
Okay.
Can we, is it appropriate for us to speak to the people, like why we wish to proceed with one or the other or both? Is that an appropriate discussion?
People as in candidates?
Yes.
I mean, it's public meeting, Alder, so part of the discussion they'll hear if you want to speak directly to them. I don't see that there'd be an issue with that.
I'm just trying to understand what, like, what's appropriate in our discussion right now.
It's just, it's like a regular motion, so it's debatable. I think it's completely appropriate to, you know, debate why.
I'm just wondering if that might be a, if that's going to be an effective method for us to make a decision about these amendments.
Might as well try, Alder.
Okay, so I'll start. So I'll just say I chose Michael Rosenbloom, most importantly because of his very extensive experience, both on city committees and also in the neighborhood association. That's somebody who's coming in with a tremendous amount of knowledge, already of city processes and of the neighborhood, and that was the driving factor for me, for why I felt that he would be the best qualified for this position. I am very hesitant to move forward with two names nonetheless, because I think it will set up a very big challenge at council, but I still believe that he is, of the candidates that we saw tonight, I found him the most qualified.
Thank you, Alder Ritter. Alder Madison?
I think for similar reasons is why I'm supporting John G. Gisgier. It's really fine, last name, but I just, and I think all the candidates had something, something brilliant to bring to the table, I just felt like, based on the kind of work that doesn't just affect District 19, but affects, you know, the city as a whole, including District 19, I felt like he was the most well-rounded, and I very much appreciate folks who stay engaged despite a previous outcome of anything they've, they've worked towards. And I just, there's something about his replies that, even though he's on a sustainable committee, but they felt sustainable across the board. So I wouldn't just, I wasn't just concerned with his work on that committee, but I felt like, I don't know, his overall experience will affect us, like the housing crisis, I get from him that he will make a well-rounded decision, not just based on District 19, but the city as a whole and its issues that we're facing. So that was my reason for a lot of what Alder Ritter said about Mr. Rosenbloom, it is for me, some of the same reasons for this candidate. I just felt like, based on the kind of work that doesn't just affect District 19, but affects, you know, the city as a whole, including District 19, I felt like he was the most well-rounded, and I very much appreciate folks who stay engaged despite a previous outcome of anything they've, they've worked towards. And I just, there's something about his, his replies that even though he's on a sustainable committee, but they felt sustainable across the board. So I wouldn't just, I wasn't just concerned with his work on that committee, but I felt like, I don't know, his overall experience will affect us, like the housing crisis, I get from him, that he will make a well-rounded decision, not just based on District 19, but the city as a whole and its issues that we're facing. So that was my reason for a lot of what Alder Ritterver said about Mr. Rosenbloom. It is, for me, the, some of the same reasons for this candidate. So, yeah.
Thank you, Alder Madison. Govendrajan?
Question. If I wanted to speak on my motion, I would wait until that motion showed up. Okay, thank you.
Yes, as in council.
But, I mean, you can source.
Yeah.
We're in discussion.
Yeah.
I will do that. I motioned earlier to reopen the application process, and I think my kind of thing with this is that this process itself has been very confusing, and has not had a lot of information available to us as alders. We had the resumes given to us by the candidates, and then we had two preset questions that was asked of them, and I don't really think that provides a lot of information whatsoever. We don't really know what residents of District 19, or residents in Madison in general, think about these candidates. We were not in a place comfortable enough to ask our own questions of the candidates in response to their applications or what they mentioned. We didn't have the ability to set up separate meetings to talk to all of them, or whatever it may be. I think just, I would favor pushing this back a little bit, having more information, whether it's just extending the questions that we can ask next time around, and allocating enough time at CCEC, whatever it may be. I think that would be a lot more beneficial than appointing candidates that I, I personally feel like I have way too little information about to make a good decision. But, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Thank you, President. At your request, I will withdraw my motion for an amendment in response to Alder Govendra- I'm so sorry. You know, this process of selecting and recommending an interim alder has evolved over time. It's not perfect, but it is what it is. We have the applications, we have the chance, and here are the questions, and it's for an interim position. We don't have the opportunity to poll residents, nor is it necessary. I do think, with all due respect to Alder Slack's request, that there be representation in this district in a timely matter, it would be grossly irresponsible for us to delay. I selected and advocated for Michael Rosenbloom, but I can see that that is not the leaning consensus of the body at this current time, and I would yield to the floor and ask that we could go ahead with the vote, so that we can prepare for our meeting at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
So, and I'll be very short. So I, I mean, I took, I know I said I wasn't going to take notes, but I did take notes. So, again, good luck reading them, because I can't even read my own notes. But definitely, my top two candidates came through. I think there was a lot of, it showed the knowledge and, that you guys have on the needs of the district, and the things that the city is experiencing, but I picked my candidate, the person that I picked, he really spoke to me on the areas that we're really struggling with right now, that are like, for example, the West Area Plan. That is something that is going on, that has been going on for over a year, that we're about to close down on it, that we need to be like, like I have been in all of those meetings, so to come prepared to just that topic, that's a huge, that was a huge thing for me. And the Oldana Area Plan, which I know that, they keep on sticking it on my, you know, like, oh, do I have to be involved in this? But it is, those two things are huge things happening on the city, on the West Side right now. So that first question, I, I was trying to keep up, trying to take the notes of all the things that, that were included in two minutes, and there was a lot there of what we are dealing with on the agenda every single night. So I love the experience that you're bringing to this, and your planning experience, definitely, but that's, but I, I, when we join on, on my vote, and I, whoever gets through, like, if you, I would love for you guys to continue to stay engaged, and to provide support to us in the areas that you of expertise are, but that, that's where I was landed. I mean, like, I took the most notes on, on the two of you, because you do align with the very difficult agenda items that we have in the council and the committees, so. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, do I have to make the disclaimer of permission of Speaker's chair? Attorney Haas? No, okay. So, to respond to Alder Govendrajan, and I know I probably will have to repeat this at C C., but just to talk about the process, and have you all think about if we do not make a decision tonight, what that could look like. So many of us participated in a policy-values-based retreat this weekend. I feel like a big piece that came out of that, that everyone may be able to at least nod their head on, is how difficult this job is, and how, not to shame anyone, unprepared many of us were for the totality of the work. We have talked about, and Vice President Figaro Cole just alluded to, the issues at hand that are continuing to move along in this city, whether there is an alder for District 19 appointed tonight or not. So I also ask you to think about past iterations, those of us who were in the past council and had to appoint five interim alders within a span of less than a year, the challenges there, the challenges that were experienced specifically in District 12, and what we heard from constituents about the lack of having an elected person or an appointed person in that seat to represent their interests on matters that directly impact them before it impacts the entire city. The second part of that would be thinking about the council office staff. They already have 19 of us to deal with. I know the process is not perfect, but again, as in my encouragement before, to make a decision tonight, based on the information that we do have. We know that we won't know everything. We, those of us who campaigned, those of us who didn't, there are always questions, there are always things that pop up, but ultimately, if we do not have an alder right now, we have council staff checking the email and monitoring that. We know how many emails we all get individually, and so I would ask you all, if the process, it is flawed, I will acknowledge that, that we focus our efforts as a body on improving the process, should another interim, another situation or vacancy like this occur during our time as CCEC members, or for future CCEC members. And I think also, listening specifically to alders that we are peers with, who have been through this experience, and we have alders on the council right now, Alder Madison was appointed, Alder Wahili was appointed as interim alder. So I would ask that we focus our attention there, and make a decision with the information that we have tonight, so that we can get through other controversial topics that we know are going to be before us. Thank you. With that, I will move us into roll call. So the vote on the table, someone help me with the wording, because clearly, I'm not saying it right.
Sense, sense.
Alder Wahili has a question.
Thank you. So the, this body might recommend one person, but we, as a council, have the right to call anyone to the bag at the end of tonight. No, no, he would, no, but you, yes, he withdrew, but you, this body might recommend one candidate, but as a council member, I have the right to call another candidate at the council.
Any of the candidates that applied for the position? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I was just informed by Attorney Haas that the entire body has to agree to allow Alder Evers to withdraw his motion. Is that because there was a second?
Is it allowable by the body? I will assume.
We have one comment?
Yes, I'll say yes.
Oh, oh, oh.
Unless I see her here, otherwise, I will assume unanimously the body agrees to allow Alder Evers to withdraw his motion, so we are back to the original motion of recommending John Ughere's move forward as the CCEC recommendation to common council, and we will have staff called to roll.
Okay. Vice President Figaro Cole?
Yes, aye.
Figaro Cole, aye. Alder Ritterver?
Aye.
Ritterver, aye. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Madison, aye. Alder Govendrajan? Alder Govendrajan abstained. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Conklin, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Evers, aye. Five ayes, one abstention.
So with five ayes and one abstention, that motion passes, so the recommendation from CCEC to common council will be to appoint John Ughere to fill the District 19 vacancy until the spring 2025 election. And by ordinance, we have to have future agenda items. It is on the agenda, but we are near to our ending time, and we do have a list, and considering the conversation tonight, it probably will focus around filling CCEC vacancies, filling common council vacancies. At this time, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Unless I see her here, otherwise, some unanimous consents. Thank you, we are adjourned.